October sixteenth, school committee meeting to order, any public input? Seeing none. We will, uh, the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second?
Anyone have any, like, removed? All those in favor? Five zero. Now we will have reports.
Well, I know that Fall Musical is coming up, Pippen Production, November tenth to twelfth, and the seventeenth to nineteenth. Other than that, I know seniors are, I'm applying, dealing with college applications. So, that's pretty good.
Starting already?
Yeah, some early, uh, early action.
Yep.
Doctor nine?
Um, I'm gonna let Ali talk about, uh, Rakasa.
Oh, our, um, annual meeting and Doctor Ruth Potte, okay.
Kiara.
Uh, so, I think that was two weeks ago, we had the Rakasa annual meeting and we had our district attorney, um, and Doctor Ruth Potte, and they both spoke on, um, Doctor Potte's expertise is around sort of pediatric addiction issues and marijuana, and she really, both of them spoke very powerfully about the linkage between sort of early usage, first usage, and, you know, how that can affect addict, the rates of addiction later on. And they really, one of the things they did was really commend actually our district, our superintendent, Rakasa, Erica McNamara, and the police chief, and the support of the police department for really all the really incredibly good proactive work from the screening that we did, you know, the Utherisk Behavior Survey, and really monitoring that data and taking action based on that data. Oh, look at the discussion. And she, Doctor Potte really sort of held the district and the, and the coalition and the, and the chief up as a model. And, um, I think the, you know, the, we would have liked to see the attendance be much bigger. Um, and it's, and it's such a critical issue, and it's just a struggle to figure out how to get people out so that they can be educated and informed on how to be proactive, what to look for, what's important, you know, why is it important to talk to your kids about not using marijuana, not using alcohol? Why is it important for you to role model as an adult behavior that, that says something diff, that shows what you want them to do? Not, you know, do as I say, not as I do, because that really doesn't work that effectively, as it turns out. So that, I think that the down part of it was that there wasn't as many people there from the community as we would have liked, those of us who have been passionate about this for many years who were in the room. But she was great to hear speak, Doctor Potte. So, thanks, Gary.
Thank you. Thank you. You're, you're on the agenda?
Sure, I'm on the agenda, but I do have a quick report. So, the CPAC, they met on October fourth. Um, we went through some of the OCR information again and kind of talked about some of the information that I included in the memo that I'll be going over later. We discussed some upcoming PD, and a new board has been elected. Alicia just came in, she's no longer on our board. Um, but Sarah McGlaughlin, Sarah Scapidi, Julie Wall, and Terry Texera are now the CPAC board, and they were just meeting prior to this to discuss their structure that they'd like to have as a board, and it seems that they will be operating as co-chairs versus a president. So, it's great, we have some new parents who are willing to step up and become, take on some leadership roles, and we're appreciative of those who served prior to them, but it is exciting that we're generating new families who want to participate. I wanted to update the board that we continue to have, a vacancy for the speech and language position at the high school. I think I had mentioned that I was going to share with you some of the information about that. So, the position has been posted four times since the end of the June school year. The position was, for three of those postings, the position was only a point eight position. This last time we posted it, we increased that to a one point oh in the hopes of attracting some sort of candidate. The first posting that we had, we had three applicants for the position. The second posting, we had two applicants. The third posting, we had three applicants, and with our most recent one, we have two applicants, so we're hoping to bring those in. The position has been offered to two people who have backed out once we have offered the position. We've reached out to two agencies that sometimes have helped us fill positions, I think it's Panorama and Delta T. We haven't had a lot of luck identifying a credentialed person. I've also contacted Commonwealth Learning Center, because they've helped us out at different times, as well as Linda Muth Bell, who has provided some support for us. Neither of them have a speech and language pathologist that they could recommend. We also posted through some of my connections on the board that I'm, I serve on for the International Dyslexia Association, there are a couple of speech and language pathologists, two of whom work out of MGH at the Institute of Health Professionals, where they actually run a training program. So, we've posted the position through their career services office, and again, in hopes of just kind of getting a different audience. Right now, we are utilizing a private speech and language pathologist named Teresa Sadowski to do most of our evaluations, and if she's available, she does service students, but she's not available to really fill the position. We're also reviewing the speech and language schedules of other SLPs in the district, but as you all know, we don't want to have a gap in another building to meet this need because we'll be in a similar situation. All the families have been notified, they received a letter indicating that we have this vacancy, and that once the position is filled, we'll be able to document and develop a plan for compensatory services. But we really can't put a proposal out right now because we wouldn't know how many services they've missed until we fill the position. So, it's really not a great position to be in, but we've definitely been struggling, and as you can see from the numbers of actual applicants, we aren't getting a high number of applicants for the position.
Thank you. So, one other thing, Doctor Doxter submitted a report from the CPAC as well, which I'll put with the minutes.
And I do have one other piece for the board to note, is that we did receive another complaint from the Office for Civil Rights, another OCR complaint. It is a disability-based allegation at this point, again, they are allegations, and the only piece I can report out to you is that on November first, we have to submit documentation. We won't have any further information, as you know, when we presented the last one, the timeline was over a year before we actually had a finding. We'll continue to keep you updated on the process, but we've just received an allegation and are putting together the documentation.
Where was the OCR complaint?
Right now, we are, we're choosing not to share it because we're in the midst of kind of investigating, so I'd prefer to just kind of leave it in that we had, we do have a disability base.
We're not, we're not gonna indicate where, what particular level of the building that it's at?
We weren't going to do that at this point.
Yeah, at this point, we, we're still gathering information and sending it.
We don't want to compromise the process.
Wouldn't that be public information, though? I mean, if somebody requested it?
Yeah.
It would be, but at this point, we feel that we need to get the information to OCR, then we'll be more than happy to, to share more with the committee.
Thank you. I had a question about the vacancy, you're clearly struggling to fill it. What do you attribute that to? What, the point eight was one possibility? Do you have any insight into what the challenge is?
Um, I think that it's a hard position to fill, is my sense. I think there are openings. I also think high school is, we had this struggle with our reading specialists as well. I think finding people with that training to work at the high school level is a little more of a challenge, as we experienced with the reading specialist, which is why we switched that to a special ed teacher, and we did some training around reading in order to fill that position. So, we attracted, our goal in that position was to attract someone who was a special ed teacher for high school, and then we have been training them, and, okay.
But that strategy wouldn't work in this instance?
No, no, because it's, yes, it's speech and language.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that? So, you know, I think, I'm just wondering if it's also has to do with sort of the support that, that we provide, and I don't know, you know, how that is out in the, in the teacher universe as people are looking for jobs, but, you know, to draw sort of a different example, when we're looking for an elementary principal, the fact that we don't have assistant principals and we have sort of a teacher that provides some backup support is, is a little, a negative compared to a district that has a elementary assistant principal. So, I'm just sort of also wondering, is that something that you feel is in play here or not, in terms of, do people look at it and say, these jobs are more difficult because we don't really get the, there's not as much support, or do people not really see that from the outside?
Right, this is a, this is a position in the teachers bargaining unit, so it's not a, it's actually a pretty kind of standard caseload and management type of job, so.
So, it wouldn't be viewed as something that is, you know, it's har, it's harder to do in Redding, I guess?
No, no, I wouldn't say that would be true for this position.
It's just a very difficult position. There is not a deep pool of candidates to begin with, and this time of year is even less.
So, is the posting at MGH, so that, that's sort of looking at a little bit different universe of people that might be qualified, but sort of a different, a different, trying to get a different pool, a bigger, a wider pool?
Yes, well, and they run a program for speech and language, so they run a program that people come out of that's a dual certification, it's in speech and language and reading, which would be fantastic. So, that's why I thought they might be a good match for us to find a candidate out of that, and we have had some candidates from MGH come to us from that program, so I thought it might be a great way to attract. So, we're just kind of continually getting it out there, and.
So, how do we meet the, the requirements, or the IEP requirements for the students there?
We're not able to meet them right now because we don't have someone to provide it, which is unfortunate. That's why I said we're looking to look at other schedules, we do have someone who comes in, but she's not able to commit the time, so our focus has been on having her complete the evaluations that we need to.
Could that be another potential civil rights violation?
Uh, but we have documented all the things that we're doing, so it's not that we're not trying, we're making a lot of attempts, and that's the guidance we've always received from the department, which is why I wanted to share with you all kind of the, the steps we've taken. This position became open the end of June, we received notice from the person who was in the position, so it wasn't something we could have posted at the time, like in April, so we, we posted late for this position, but that's when we received notice from that person that they would not be returning. So, so it did also have an impact, because when you post the end of June.
Less candidates.
Yeah, you get less candidates at that point.
Can I just?
Yes.
You did say, though, that you're working on establishing and coming up with what compensatory services would be for each of the families, once we know sort of what that, once we get a resource in, and then you can say what the sort of totality of that is. So, you're already in communication with the families?
Yep, and we're tracking, and we're tracking all the missed services, and we'll be providing, as we talked about when I went over the mid-cycle review, that we'll be providing them a letter that outlines at least two options for them in terms of accessing compensatory services. So, it may be that we offer something after school, we may be able to offer something during the school day, depending on their child's schedule, and then most likely we'll offer something during extended school year or during the summertime that families could access. It's not ideal, and I, I don't want to portray that it is, this isn't a great situation, but we are making every effort to try to find someone, and, and it's been very challenging.
Yeah, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Two, two questions. One, any feedback you've gotten from, you mentioned there were two candidates who accepted and then didn't begin the position? I'm interested in what you, what we learned from that. And secondly, in terms of meeting the IEPs, which is required obviously by the law, are, is, is there a proposal that you could make to us, or, or, you know, about what it would, what the cost would be for, I don't know if out-of-district services are available to meet the students' requirements, or, you know, hiring someone from, you know, the private sector, the Post and FTE, do we have that?
Those are, those are the options I've been exploring, that's what Panorama and Delta T are, they're staffing agencies that help you find someone. They have not been able to produce a candidate at this point, so we are looking at contracting privately.
But, but not, not fill the position, although that's, that's certainly the goal. I'm just talking about providing the service.
Yeah, that's what, that's what they would do.
But, but actually send them somewhere to receive the service from a professional who can provide that?
Well, then we would also have to incur the cost for transportation.
I know, but the question is, do we have a price on what it would cost to meet the IEPs?
I can absolutely look into that.
Bottom line, we, we've got to meet these IEP requirements, don't we? It's a question. I, I think we should know what that would cost, and if we can do it.
I would think that would have a really big impact on the rest of their day, but, yeah. Can I, I just, so those two agencies, are you, I'm sorry, are they, are they trying to help find the permanent candidate?
No, they are staffing, they, who find a, they can find a speech pathologist who can come here and provide the service for temporary.
Even if it's temporary, but they're qualified teachers, they have all the right certifications?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so that's what they do, these companies, they find the people and they bring them to you to provide the service. I'm happy to look into that. The challenge for most of our students at the high school level is involvement in extracurricular activities, and also, as you know, their schedule rotates, so they don't have a consistent time typically that that service is provided. So, we have, that's where the challenge comes with either sending a student somewhere else, because it's not like they have, it's the same time every day for that student, so.
Hold on a second. Doctor Doherty, has there ever been a precedent where with certain positions, we require a certain number of days' notice, as opposed to, you know, just coming up on the thirtieth of the month and saying, I'm all done after this year's, you know, when I'm, like, with a normal, with a, 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 with
At the end of a school year, at the end of a school year, it doesn't. There is no time requirement.
I understand there isn't one now, I'm saying, is that something that's ever been explored for certain, what I would consider hard-to-fill type positions, or?
During the school year, there is a time requirement. It's, I believe, thirty school days in the contract, it's in the teacher's contract.
Right, and, um.
But at the end of the school year, we, we can't hold a staff member, because they don't start again until September, in another school district, so.
Right, so it's actually more technically more than.
But the contract runs until.
Right, but there's no, we have nothing to hold that person to stay here.
And even if it did, it wouldn't matter because it's thirty days, so.
The other question was about the feedback from the candidates. I can ask the HR administrator, I'm not involved in that process. Those hiring decisions are made at the building level, as you recall, and so I'm just reporting out the information, but I'm happy to get that information.
Yeah, I, I understand where Nick is coming from, but I don't really think it's a good use of Mrs. Wilson's time to investigate this, because I think the other things that she's working on are much more likely to yield a result, and we, we've al, we've already said we're gonna provide compensatory services, I just don't think that, looking at the likelihood that the high school students are gonna be able to work a particular time into their schedule, when the schedules are so changeable, I don't, I just don't think it's a good use of her time. I don't, and I'm not sure that, you know, I mean, we're talking about it here, but ultimately, Doctor Doherty should be able to review that request and decide whether it's a good use of her time.
I have a thought, too, on what Mr. Bobbin was suggesting, and it's really a question for you. In, in the event that, that were a viable solution, and I, I sort of share your concerns about the, just the logistics of it, I don't know how that would even work, but even hypothetically if it could, would that be a decision, would that be a change enough that an IEP team would have to be involved?
It would really depend on what we ultimately were doing, because, yeah, yes.
Is, is each of those plans so individual? I can't envision a situation where the district comes in and says, okay, this group of students, we're gonna do something radically different. I mean, I would assume that would have to go through parents, IEP terms, how does this impact other search, or, so, just.
And a lot of, yeah, and a lot of that work that we're doing with students in this area is really trying to carry that over into the general setting. A lot of that work might be on social interactions, that the goal is that you're applying that in the greater school community, not just in your thirty-minute or fifty-eight-minute session. So, it's really up to the committee in terms of looking at that. We're still looking at the agencies, and we do have two candidates who have applied in the last week, so.
So, yeah, I, and I imagine an individual student might have other disabilities that you would want to have a discussion as a team about, and, you know, you're not just treating this one thing, there might be other, you know, it just, it would seem like a highly individualized decision, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Doctor Doherty?
Um, I'm all set.
Okay, so, for the remainder of the evening, we'll, we'll have the data presentation, followed by the special education report, and then the year-end budget report, and then a discussion on the calendar, because regarding a change in the previously voted calendar, because of Veterans Day, so, so we can jump into the data, data presentation.
Great. So, in a few minutes, I'm gonna turn this over to Carolyn Wilson, and then ultimately to Courtney Fogarty, our district data coach. But I'm actually very pleased to kind of get a chance to kick off this brief presentation, as I really think it touches upon some of what I think is some of the more exciting work that we're doing in our district, and some of the work that I think will be potentially the most impactful, not only for all of our students, but for all of our staff as well in supporting them. Tonight, to be very sort of upfront about this, it's not a presentation about any specific data, or the reporting out of any particular scores on any particular area, but rather, this is a presentation about how we are building capacity among our entire staff in new ways to meaningfully inform our decisions about students and their progress. I think as a teacher, maybe I know that it's important to explain what something is not in addition to what it is. And so, I really want to sort of stress that while examining and, and reporting out on specific data is very important, building the capacity for the process of that is also extremely important, and in many ways, even perhaps more important for some districts to do well, for a district. So, essentially, tonight's presentation is not the, about what, but it's about the how. So, a couple of quick thoughts about our cover slide here. First, I wanted to say something about the little quote that we have on there. Not everything that can be counted counts, not everything that counts can be counted. In tackling this topic successfully, I think this little quote captures what I think is some, a concept that's really in the heart of teachers, of educators, that it's saying in essence that while we have an abundance of valuable data available to us as educators, all classroom teachers would tell you that there are countless items so crucially vital to every child's development and success that are really very difficult to measure, or at the very least, they really don't show up, sometimes until years later, in a child's achievement. But any teacher knows that while these many things might be hard to count, they really do count a lot in creating the type of school that a child feels very welcome to come to each and every day, in, in preparing all students for their future. You know, things like each time a teacher, you know, helps a child gradually regulate his or her behavior to be more successful, each time a teacher is encouraging a student to maybe consider that they are capable of goals that they might not have even ever set for themselves, or many other sort of countless, innumerable small moments that happen hundreds of times a day in every classroom. Those all, all count tremendously, but are hard to capture in data. In many ways, as I said, sometimes they do show up indirectly, years later, in the achievement or progress that child is making, but we wanted to mention that because we think that's really is in the heart of teachers. I love that this, I'm putting Courtney in the spot for a second, I love that this quote is on Courtney's office door, because it really shows us how she understands how to connect with educators, and how she, that she knows how to leverage data in a way that will help us build new capacities in all of us, really. So, I think we're very fortunate to have her because she not only has such great expertise in the data, but she has these sensibilities that I really do think connects with the values and heart of educators. Data-driven versus data-informed, I want to say something really quickly about that. You know, I think I've said before that I, in some other presentations, I, personally, I really don't like the phrase "data-driven," but prefer "data-informed," and for the most part in our district, I think we use that phrase. I found a little excerpt from an article that I thought was relevant here, and it was especially meaningful to me because it actually applies to businesses. It was actually from Forbes Magazine a couple of years ago, basically saying how, you know, making the point that it's, data's an invaluable and persuasive source of business insight, but when it comes to making that insight work, don't let data completely overrule your human instincts and experience. Being data-informed is about striking a balance, in which your expertise and understanding of information plays as great a role in your decisions as the information itself. It's like flying an airplane. No matter how sophisticated the systems onboard are, a highly-trained pilot is ultimately responsible for making decisions at critical junctures. Far from taking decision-making away from people, data can actually make them better at it by giving them more inputs to work with. It's like GPS for, in your car. When the system presents you with all the available options, you have more information with which to assess what you want to do next. That captures one of the reasons, I think, why being data-informed resonates more powerfully with teachers than being data-driven. Our teachers are our drivers, who are utilizing their GPS to reach certain outcomes with their students. They are our experienced airplane, airplane pilots, and it's very important, as we do this work, to never minimize their experience, their daily interactions with, with students, and how well they get to know their students through the course of day after day, in applying that data in meaningful ways. I also wanted to say, we've talked a little bit about this before, that when it comes to using data in this way, I think it's important to sort of understand upfront, as we do this work, that for many educators, especially in some districts, data has really been associated mostly with accountability measures, mandated policies that they see sometimes as top-down, without really the local districts doing the necessary work to create the capacity to make that successful. As a result, many authors over the last several years have talked about the detrimental impact that it's had in morale in the profession. And I think it's important to understand that upfront, that in doing this work as a district, we have to acknowledge that, and we have to make sure that we're not falling into this trap, into this trap. Michael Fulen, great scholar in the field of education, the quote at the top there is his, and a couple of these slides refer to him. He's saying, "Standards and accountability are exceedingly weak strategies for driving reform." In other words, I believe he's saying that accountability and standards are absolutely crucial, they're essential. We need them as part of the process, they're just a terrible way to start change. Right. A little bit later in his book, Michael Fulen has a chart, there's a few quotes there, but he talks about what are the best drivers for change, and this has been very important to us as we've been doing this work in the last year or more. And he says, accountability, instead of accountability, even though it's a very essential step, and, and all of us need to be held accountable for the results that we want, the right way to drive change, to start a reform process, is through capacity building. And he gives some other examples there of the wrong versus right. Instead of putting the burden on individual solutions, focusing on collaborative efforts, instead of any one particular strategy, whether that's technology, or a particular program, or anything like that, it really is about the systemic approach and the overall pedagogy. I mean, in defense of policymakers, legislators, and so forth, whether you're talking about legislators, or departments of education, the state departments and so forth, this often is their only lever to force change, but it really is up to us, I believe, in the field, at the district level, in leading and guiding this change, to keep this in mind, that our. To keep this in mind, that our first responsibility needs to be collaborative, incorporate the expertise that we have in our staff and to build the capacity in all of us to guide us through that. So before I turn it over, I think I've shown a version of this maybe a year or maybe even more ago. And that is really how you build capacity. And I think this slide kind of captures well, I'm not going to read it all obviously, but it really kind of shows the framework for capacity building. And how collaborating effectively is key there. You know, whether that's creating a shared leadership in each of the schools. Clearly defining the desired student outcomes and then aligning our PD to support those. Understanding that accountability for student learning is shared among all of us as a team. It doesn't fall on the shoulders of a particular educator or just the classroom teacher. It really is on all of us. And then also becoming comfortable with collaboratively examining and discussing student work, which is happening more and more throughout our district. This type of systemic capacity building is really vital and that's what this presentation is really about.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about kind of our overall objectives. So we've talked in the past about our multi-tiered system of support, the MTSS model. That's our framework. So we really, in looking at improving student outcomes, improving outcomes for all students, we want to look at our data as one piece, our systems and our practices to help improve those outcomes. So this work is important because the way we look at data, as Mr. Martin said, is not just to inform, is not just to drive us, but to inform our practice. We want to have our teachers improve their craft. We want them reflecting on their practice based on the information that they're gathering from classroom observation, from, from hard data that we're collecting. But we want them to create, create a culture where there's reflection on practice, improving practice. We also, when you look at how we're doing this work in question number four. We are looking at data and having collaborative data conversations at every different level. So we have these conversations at our district administrative leadership team. We have a district wide team, which includes teachers and administrators that are looking at different data points. All related to those same goals we've established as a district. Because as when Dr. Doherty presents, there's an alignment between the goals we have as a district and the data we're collecting and reflecting on at these different meetings. To the building leadership teams, down to teacher individual goals in their evaluation. And this process, our goals are that this process through this reflection, collaboration through different lenses, looking at similar data. That we are improving the practices of our teachers and also improving those outcomes for our students. Because everyone is looking at the data from their perspective. As a, as a district wide administrator, for instance, I look at data patterns very different than a classroom teacher would. And that's an important lens to have and that's why it's important that different people look at it and share their perspectives. When we talk about data, we often talk about achievement versus progress. And I really like this slide because oftentimes we are thinking about that achievement piece. We talk a lot about performance on the MCAS or the PARC, which is achievement. It's a point in time that measures how a student is doing. But progress is really another important piece that we have to work as, as with our teachers on because we want to see growth. And we want to look at how students are making growth from one year to the next. I equate this to the IEP process, that each IEP has an annual measurable goal. That should show the progress that the student is making over time. We want to see that growth for students. And not just focus on that one achievement point, which is again, a shift for some of our teachers in practice and in collaboration. And then finally, some of the guiding questions that we really think about and sort of challenge our teachers to think about is what do we want each student to learn? How will we know that each student has learned it? How will we respond when a student experiences difficulty in learning? And how will we deepen the learning for students who have already mastered essential knowledge and skills? So these questions are questions we have as our teachers collaborate. As you remember, they collaborate in their building leadership teams to look at data. They collaborate in their PLCs, their professional learning communities to look at different data points. They have grade level meetings. So there's many opportunities for our teachers to reflect on how students are doing and ways they can change what they're doing in the classroom. To either respond to those students who are struggling or to extend the lesson for those students who are ready to move beyond that. So as Mr. Martin said, it really is about shifting the culture in our school so that our teachers are feeling comfortable utilizing the data we're collecting. And also utilizing that instinct they have as a teacher and, and working together in groups to discuss this information. So now, we're going to turn it over to Courtney Fogarty, our data analyst, to give us an example of how the process works.
Hi guys, thanks for having me. So the slides before this kind of went through is why, and why we look at data, why we're using it in our district. Why we want all eyes on it, not just one person in an office. And I'm going to look at the how. How do teams take that information and turn it into actionable steps? How do you take the overall MCAS scores and turn it into changing practice? Because you guys see a lot of data come through here. You see the YRBS presentation that Erica McMoray gave in the summer. How are we using that? How are we taking that from the beautiful slides that Erica had, the actionable steps at our district level, at our buildings and in our classrooms? Because the biggest challenge, you heard a list of people looking at information, the biggest challenge is finding a way for all these people to draw a line between the overall outcome and what they do in the classroom. And that takes a lot of effort because you've got a lot of people on that ship that you're trying to change course with. So I actually will go through an example of, it is real data. It's from a survey that we took at the end of the year. We take it every year. It's called the DCA, the District Capacity Assessment. But, and I'll be taking you through it, using the steps that we use to go through any data, including MCAS, including YRBS. We've started those efforts with both those things and a couple others. And I thought this would be a great way to show you, also because the reports for the DCA are broken down in exactly this manner. So it kind of helped you walk from the bird's eye view to the, the in-classroom view. So to start with the resources, because we didn't come up with this process of nowhere and it wasn't just because of me. It wasn't just like, hey, this is my idea, let's go with it. It's based off of a couple of main resources that we used. Data analysis for continuous school improvement was something I used, used in my last district. It's out of UCLA with Victoria, Dr. Victoria Bernhardt. It takes a really big systems approach at looking at data. It helps you organize from that bird's eye view. For actual data, there's a resource and protocol book from the School Resource Institute, which Jean Thompson drove, worked with. And that one is to help especially collect qualitative data between, within conversations between adults. It's for facilitating and validly collecting qualitative information from your conversations. Solving disproportionality and achieving equity is a great way, it's, it's a new aspect that I've never gotten to work with. And it's a great way to use quantitative data to assess sometimes more qualitative things like disproportionality in office referrals and grading and even class enrollment. So that's something we're working with. Data wise is out of Harvard University. It's a really great program from their School of Education. And it has really good practices and a six step wheel for building and classroom teams. So we're working on building capacity that way. And the ultimate building capacity book is the Data Coach's Guide for Improving Learning for All Students. It kind of has a scope and sequence, so to speak, of how to take teams through this work. So that I have kind of a backbone for how to do it, so that, just so you know, I'm not doing it out of nowhere. And that one's really helpful and is used by the teachers, Research for Better Teachers in Akron, Mass. I don't know if anyone's ever taken a class there. And a really important quote that we got from researchers at the PBIS National Gathering, which was in Chicago a couple of weeks ago, was, "Don't build data systems, build decision systems." This was from Rob Horner out of University of Oregon. And it was echoed by many of his colleagues from around the country. Our goal here isn't to build the biggest computer system with all the bells and whistles that we can have. It's really to build a system where we know when to make decisions, how to make decisions and with what. Instead of focusing on, should it be Excel sheets? Should it be this? Should it be that? Should we pay twenty thousand dollars for a fancy system? This is helping us, because it doesn't matter how fancy a system you get, if nobody knows what to do with it, simply how to use it, what meetings it should be used at, what teammates should be using it. It's, it's no use. So it's helping us build those decision systems first. And just the ABCs to kind of give you an idea of what we do look at. So the ABCs is one of the concepts from Data Wise, the Harvard one. And it's, breaks everything down into A, B and C, attendance, behavior and course performance. There's a lot of data coming at you at all times. As a teacher, as a board member, you have a lot of presentations coming at you. And sometimes you don't know which things you should pay attention to and which things are a little extraneous. This helps you narrow down. Attendance, behavior, course performance are the main things that a classroom teacher needs to look at when they're making decisions on how to place a student. So they don't feel like, okay, I have a lot of observations as well, how do I factor these in? Most teams I work with use at least one of everything. My recommendation is to use at least one of each of these categories. I definitely will not recommend using every single bullet on this page. And most teams use two or three course performance measures because that, you know, that's the nature of our business, right? Making sure students are learning and progressing the way that, that we want them to be, to be the most successful that we know they can be. And attendance and behavior, since those are a little bit newer concepts for how to work with, teams usually pick one of those to work with or to focus on. For instance, I know some schools use SRSS and SIBS and that's because they have a tier two either mentoring or checking checkout program. They use that specifically for entry criteria. It's part of their decision making system. Yeah, and so the levels of analysis comes from the Data Coach's Guide, that one from Research for Better Teaching. And it recommends this triangle and I really like this because aggregate level's at the top, not because it's important, but it's the smallest. Because you should spend the least amount of your time on the overall look. You get the overall look of MCAS scores or something and you have a reaction to it. You hear yay for successes or, oh no, I don't really like that and I don't want to know why. But we can't spend our whole year there because we won't figure out why it happened or, or what we could change to either keep up the result we liked or get away from the result we don't like. So that takes you to, so it recommends that you work from that smallest amount to the biggest amount. Not saying that the teacher should have to work with the most data, but it's that they're the ones who gather the most because that's where they were. And they gather through their observations, through their planning, because they use the scope and sequence that the district decided on. And they plan with their grade level team and place students through their observations and their data decisions. So that's where most of the time should be spent because that's where the, the action really happens, so to speak. So in between that, it goes from disaggregate level to disaggregate, to strand, a strand analysis, then an item analysis. And then adds in student work and staff voice to get more observational and qualitative information along with some of the other things we broke down. So what happens at each level, just to break it down a little more. So if you have the aggregate, you look at overall outcomes. That's your bird's eye view. That's usually what you see sent out when there's something going to the public is how do we do? What does it look like? The disaggregate level, which is the next step in understanding why did we get, why did we get that outcome at the top is drawing critical comparisons between areas and groups. You can do it between subgroups, like your high needs versus non-high needs, students who've been out ten or more days versus those who weren't, things like that. And then take it further into strand to collaboratively explore implications of those critical comparisons. What area contributed to the outcome the most? What group of students did or what group of students didn't get the support that we feel like they needed and how can we fix that? And then on to item analysis. As you can see, it's going from biggest to smallest in, in the work, but it goes the opposite in the time spent on it. Determine which parts of the area contributed most and action plan. What's an our control and where can we make the biggest impact? And finally, student work or staff voice depending on whether you're looking at it from an adult angle or from a student angle. Focus on student work and staff voice. What does actual student progress, success or struggle look like? What does that mean for our action plan? How do we know if we're getting the outcome that we want? And so think about the presentations that you've seen. Think about all the data that you've seen from when Lena shows the report card of RMHS. With the college acceptances and the SAT mean scores and things like that. How do we take that from the top of the pyramid to down here? How do we take the scores that we liked or didn't like and how do we build off of what we did like and how do we change the things we weren't happy about? It's the same for YRBS. Erica did a great job collecting it and putting it together and she works with it and how do we work with it? And the next thing is to identify kind of who's at the table for these conversations. Because there should never be one person in a room. There's a reason I'm not a data analyst. I'm a data coach. Though I am often crunching numbers in my office, it's just for presentation to work with a team collaboratively so that we can like entirely understand it. So it's not just me. At the top is administrators and district staff, not because they're the most important, though they really are, very important. But because they're the ones looking at the overall view. They're the ones who present the overall view and they're the ones who have to understand what it means and decide where to go next. They're the decision holders, so to speak. Collaborative inquiry is the middle two steps for disaggregate and strand. This is where it's the work of building leadership teams, teacher leaders, administrators and specialists. So this is a team of everybody. It's a big team and they're usually looking at a lot of data. And grade level teams, which are teacher planning time with administrators and during their data meetings, which every building has. Would be when they start to take it from item to student work. So when they want to say, it's been identified up here that we need to look at math because we didn't like our math scores. They went through a, a leadership team of people who have expertise in math, those teacher leaders, administrators with those trainings, maybe title one math tutors for specialists. And they decided, you know what, we, we think it's inferential thinking or number fluency and that kind of stuck out to us. Grade level teams, some of whom include some of those teacher leaders, will then take it back to the item and student work and say, let's give a quiz. And let's look at those results and see, see what we're seeing, that kind of student work level data analysis. So I'm going to walk you through the district capacity assessment. And we're going to go at every step. So the one that's lit up is going to be the next slide. So the aggregate level, which is that overall view. You're going to see what our overall district capacity assessment score was for the sixteen, seventeen school year. So again, the kind of questions we ask at the aggregate level, how are we doing? So you have the fifteen, the sixteen, the twenty seventeen, because again, this is an annual survey that we take at the end of the year. And, sorry, I, I, my life is full of a lot of acronyms too, so I forget, people don't always remember what like the DCA or district capacity assessment is. But this is our survey that measures how well we're implementing an initiative. And in, in this case, the initiative is multi-tiered systems of, of support. So this was the district team taking the survey. It includes teacher leaders, specialists and administrators in this one. Answering survey questions about how well we're implementing MTSS. And it's been over the past three years. So we see that we went up from the first year, but we definitely went down this third year. And we went down by a fair amount and we can look at this and we probably have some reactions to it like, hm, I don't really like that. I don't know why it went down. And what does that mean for our work? And that's why we can't stop here and we can't base our whole year on, because we don't like this. Uh, yes, sorry.
Is this subjective or objective criteria that's used here and what percent response? Do we capture that in this?
Um, in this one, no, but it is a valid, a validated survey given by OSIP, I believe, yeah. And we don't, we don't calculate the results. It's out of their system and we will go through each section so you'll see. Um, and we don't, we don't calculate the results, it's out of their system, and we will go through each section, so you'll see how it's done. Um, off the top of my head, the number of respondents represented were, uh, the district, Birch Meadow, Woodend, uh, the high school, Killam, and Joshua Eaton. So it was Barrows and the two middle schools who did not respond in this part, and you will see their responses in another section.
So are there apples to cross all three bars? It's the same respondent pool?
It's not. It's the same types of, because the representatives change every year too, so it's not the same people either. And that's a really good point, and that's why we have to, when we're thinking about these results, take into account, uh, why things go down. And, 'cause I didn't wanna make it sound this way, but to one degree, a lot of it is because we did really well last year, and we knew what we wanted to do next, and maybe we couldn't do it a hundred percent, so we're pretty hard on ourselves, and we, you choose between a zero, one, and a two. And there were a couple ties where we just ended up going with the lower one, 'cause we said, you know, we can do better than that, so we're gonna give, give ourselves a lower score. But I don't wanna, like, sell it off like that, because I think we should do better, uh, and so that's why we're, we're working on it. So from the aggregate level, we got a fifty-two percent this year, seventy percent being full implementation. Um, disaggregate level is to make critical comparisons, so the kind of questions you ask at disaggregated levels are, what is, where are the successes in areas for improvement? So I wanna have us look mostly at, so has it broken down into even smaller areas, but I want us to look mostly at those lines. There are three main sections, that are leadership, competency, and organization. And a quick look at this, we say, overall, and, 'cause this is at a disaggregate level, we're looking at groups here, making critical comparisons. Um, leadership, even though it went down a little bit, is doing okay. That's not my area of most concern. Uh, I, I would say that we have an area of success, particularly in facilitative administration over there in organization, um, and some overall success in leadership. But then, it makes us wonder, where are areas for improvement? 'Cause that's what I was wondering when I was looking at this. What can I do to help teams feel like this initiative is being implemented successfully? So I zoned in along with John and Sarah Bird at the time. That was our administrative and coaching team that was looking at this, 'cause remember, that team's looking at disaggregated. And we took a look at training, coaching, and this decision support data systems, so competency and organization. We wanna know, what further do we need to do? We see kind of the areas, but what does that mean? What, what do those phrases even mean? We need to look a little bit deeper. So for strand, we took it a little bit further. And these are the questions, uh, Mr. Bovin. Um, this is an excerpt, uh, it's an extract from the page one, I believe it's twelve pages long. Um, and it breaks those questions up into those smaller areas. There were three improvements. There were overall sixteen no changes. Uh, seven of them were at the highest score that they could be, which is a two, so those were not areas of immediate improvement. And then seven decreases. So we said, alright, what skills contributed to the problem or success? We celebrated our success for a little bit. We saw the areas we went up in, um, in facilitative administration. People were feeling really comfortable that we had decision systems for how to start some of this work with MTSS. So there was a quick celebration for that, but then we said, where do we need to get to work? Um, and that was in those areas that were pointed out on the last page, which was data systems and coaching, in particular. And we said, we need to look a little closer. So we went to item level, sorry.
How long does it take to take that survey?
An hour?
Couple, uh, it was a couple of hours.
When do the teachers do that?
Last, like, the week of the last day of school.
Yeah, after the gym. And, and, and is a third party that facilitates it, just so you know, uh, when we don't self-score it, that, there was a-
Yeah, OSIP administers it.
Administers the survey and does the data.
They facilitate the, the administration of the survey.
And we enter the scores as they say it, and then it calculates out the graph for us to reduce error, yeah. Um, so we said, alright, we got the areas. It's coaching and, uh, data su- data support systems, and I believe intervention systems was the other one. And we said, we really wanna fix those things, and what are the pieces of that that people reported as being low? And here's the weighting we did. I did this with Sarah Bird, and reported it up to John in, uh, June, right after this is out of June. So we weighted them by area, and what we ended up coming up with was having, again, more acronyms in your life. The DIT has access to the AI, that's the district team has access to data for the initiative. AKA, people are saying, we want more access to MTSS information. We want more access to data that helps us decide when a student should be placed, uh, in a support they need, or when they're showing success. How do we know that a student is ready to phase out of an intervention? Those kinds of things. Um, and the district team supports the building team in using data for decision-making and has a process. Those were the ones that we had some people say two and other people say one, and we decided to go with one, 'cause we said, if everybody, if everybody doesn't feel a hundred percent on this, then it's not a hundred percent, even if we outvote them. Um, like I said, we're a little hard on ourselves, but I think it kind of leads to us making, uh, stronger decisions in the long run. Because this forces us to ask, what skills are connected? Uh, which ones have the most weight, and which ones can we address, especially if they're connected? Um, and that led us to student work slash staff voice, 'cause I didn't wanna lean just on this. I wanted to see what other teams, particularly the ones who weren't able to answer the first time, um, had to say about this. So this was every school except the high school and Birch Meadow. It just happened that way. Um, they happened to answer the first time. Um, so these are some of the SRI protocols. This is the one we used in this scenario. It's called the future protocol, uh, and the whole thing behind this was to ask the staff, what does this initiative mean in day-to-day life? Uh, what do teachers and administrators wanna work on regarding MTSS? Where, where are we missing the mark, and where are we hitting the mark? How can we help you better understand? Um, so this protocol asks them to think of how MTSS in the ideal world would look like. And then how it looks now to them, and to identify the steps in between. This is a photo of one of the team's, uh, steps in between. And it helped us, and I wrote down all the responses and coded them, uh, to determine which ones had the most responses, which ones had come from teams that had responded before. And it came, we came up with, um, the biggest things being time, access to data, and help with interventions. And it further, and there are further details as to what they meant by time. They said, we don't like being taken out for full days. We said, you got it. We're gonna, let's get rid of that. Uh, they said, we want data to co- half the teams wanted it to be immediate electronically. Some of the bigger schools wanted it to be on a schedule where it's quarterly. You got it. We'll set it up that way. Um, and now what we've done, uh, planning off of this and planning off of what they asked for with help with interventions and with help with access to data, is we redesigned our district team to have more eyes on the data and to have a coaching system in place for me to help them with their building teams. So five times a year, all the schools and rep- uh, representatives, two representatives with the administrator come to a data meeting, where we go through the data that they want to work on for their particular school goals. And then they also get to share out with other schools on interventions, uh, particularly schools at their own level. So, um, we took the beginning bar graph. Let's see, yep. We went all the way from there to a comprehensive plan of what people want and how we can make this better so that we can fully serve students and, and help students get the support they need when they need it. Um, and go through a process so that it's not one person telling them what to do. Everyone thought about it, and everyone had a chance to voice, uh, their opinions. So, it's-
So, really good presentation to, I don't wanna interrupt before the end of it, it was the last slide.
No, I thi- I think that was the end, I'm trying to think if there was one more slide.
Um, can we go to slide tw- it's slide twelve in our materials, um, it, it's the actual survey questions. It's a little bit small, but any question about that?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, I, I hear three parts to this, and I wanna make sure I'm understanding correctly, so if I'm going. So part one is, is this. In June, we have certain key educators, administrators, and district take a survey, which we don't create and we don't look at the results for as a district, correct? And the survey has these questions, and, and you have certain criteria, zero, one, two, that each respondent creates, but it's, it's their asse- individual assessment of that criteria, so it's-
There is.
I think I'm a one, a zero, or a two, or is there a specific description of what a one means, so that everybody, a one means the same thing to everybody?
There is, yeah. Thank you for asking that. That's a really important distinction. So there is a table that goes along with everyone who's responding to this. They have a table of, at this question, this is what a zero means. And this, because it does differ on each question. It'll say, evidence of this being a two would look like, um-
So, so, so there is a subjective, like, matching, but the criteria is objective, so as best we can, we're asking people to read from the same objective criteria for each of these, but they're gonna obviously bring their own perspective of that. Okay, so that's, that's the, we're gathering data that way. The second piece of it that I heard is a different piece, and that's the last slide you had? So we get this data in June, right? And then we have this, which is a different approach, right? This is putting people in a room and handwriting out kind of, it's, it's like collecting information from people and kind of, you know, writing it down and organizing it in a logical way, right?
Yes, qualitative research through a validated, um, protocol.
So you follow the protocol on the right to get the output on the, on the left on your slide.
Yep.
So the third piece then, that I didn't hear much about, was the actual student data, so for MTSS, there are certain things we, we track in our buildings for students' attendance is probably one of them. I'm sure there are others. How does, how do these three parts work together? That's what I wanna understand. So how do we go from this feedback and these two quantitative, qualitative? There must be a layer of how many students in this class or in this building are meeting these metrics, and maybe we identify students that need help, so how do they work together?
Sure, okay. So the first two parts are because this DCA is really more focused on the adults, 'cause it's focused on the systems. Um, so you're right that they can feel segregated, because what the adults need might not be the same as what the kids need, right? So this is focusing on, uh, the adult side of it, which is a lot of what my work is on too. Um, what do the teachers and staff and administrators need to feel supported in delivering interventions to students? Um, and my job was to first identify that, so then we could help the teachers in that next process of the student work there. Um, so that they'd understand how we could go from taking the MCAS at the top of this pyramid and working down in the same way. Uh, this is just a process for deciding how to do it. Um, how we connect things like decision systems, which is what you were just saying, how do we decide, like, data decision rules? That's one main thing that the teachers wrote here and that we scored pretty well on in the actual survey. They said, we thought we have them. After learning more this year, after going to presentations, we realized we don't like what we have, and we wanna work on that next year, and we need help doing that. Um, and some schools felt fine about theirs, and other schools were like, I've seen stuff that's better than what I have, and I wanna do better. Um, and that's how we planned the scope and sequence of those data meetings. That's one of our biggest focuses, is helping them further solidify what they have. 'Cause what they have is good, uh, and it can just be better. Um, and looking at the student outcomes, I think is what you're kind of getting at. If you could correct me if I'm wrong, um-
Well, how is, how is it used? I mean, it's open-ended, right? So how we get this information, we gather student information, what are the different connecting points that we have, and what are ideas on how to improve that?
Sure, so now we're saying, uh, so they, the, the staff and teachers were saying, we want help with interventions, right? So we would say, take a check-in, check-out intervention, and look at that from the overall view. How is this group of students in this intervention doing overall? So we're at the pyramid again, we're at the top. And then we take it down, like, who's responding, who's not? Are there certain types of students this isn't working for? Oh, it looks like we've put some, um, not, attention-avoiding students in this. It's probably not the best intervention for them. And then taking it down to, uh, and this is a behavior one, but you can do it with academics as well. But taking it down to strand and item, we'll go through those groups of, of teachers to say, well, actually, at our school, we did check-in, check-out this way. Have you tried it? Um, and the, the student work would be them taking either observations or frequency count of behaviors or using Swiss for office referrals. Um, I'm assuming it can be done with MCAS, going back to the top. Uh, looking at our overall math scores, uh, looking at, it looks like most of us did well. But then we look at disaggregated scores, maybe a section of our high-needs students didn't do well. Why is that? Take it down to the strand level. Was it in every math strand, or was it really just an inferential thinking? If it's inferential thinking, what were the items? Was it open, open question? Was it multiple choice? Was it the same multiple choice for most of those kids that they got tripped up on? And then the, the idea is to not wait till the next MCAS to figure out if, were we right, if that is inferential thinking? But maybe, uh, putting in inferential thinking questions in a quiz or a unit test, um, earlier on for student work, and then looking at criteria, using that as criteria for, maybe we should have a, like, an inferential thinking intervention, because we'd have a big enough group of kids that this wasn't working for. That kinda thing. So it's just a process, but thank you for asking.
Yes, Karen.
So how many respondents were there to this survey?
To this survey?
Yeah.
Oh, or the other one?
No, um, no, the, uh, the one that, uh, the slide you had, just, just up, I think. Is that the correct one?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. I was struggling.
I think, he's talking about the DCA.
Oh, I'm talking about the DCA.
Oh, the DCA.
He's talking about the DCA.
Um, of course, that is a figure I shouldn't have on the top of my head, but I don't want to guess. Um, and I don't have it written down on me, but, uh, I don't know.
So the, just so you, and, no, and I don't know if you said that's being, the DCA is done-
Vocalize, have an onsite person who's more, maybe, you know, more experienced than they might otherwise be, by virtue of learning from you.
Sure, yeah. So that is something we're working on, um, 'cause, and that's a great idea. Uh, it was one of the things that was identified here, and it's one of the things I, I was noticing as I got a little bit more familiar with the position and, and figured out how it would best work. So there is a data analyst i- on every MTSS team, that's their title. They are at varying degrees of comfort with it, but, uh, it's a learning process for adults as well. Um, so I do hold training sessions, that's what I did last year as well. Um, and this year, part of those data meetings is a targeted effort to have those three people from every building who come, uh, get specific data skills when they leave, um, and it's expected to be part of work book pages. Um, and also, to your point, uh, because I, you're absolutely right, it should be available to everyone too, to kinda look at. Um, I'm working on getting it on the, the website. I, I sent Craig a, a lot of my, like, a lot of my ideas, like, last week, so, um, it's a lot of the work that I want everyone to be able to, to get at, uh, this would be the best if, if everybody knew how to use it and feel comfortable in this way with it.
And I think having a, an onsite resource as much as possible, and kind of developing that capability and that coalition of the willing would, would be good for everyone.
Yeah, like, I know the, the Title I team, uh, has asked me to work with them, and, and they're very interested in getting even more too, so, uh, each group has, has different excited people.
Good.
Yes.
I totally understand Nick's question, and I'm appreciative of your response, but I, I'm just sort of wondering where these people are finding the time to do this, because we, we have so many expectations of the classroom. Um, we, we need to make sure teachers are executing, you know, what is required to meet student needs in the classroom. All kids, all classrooms, every day, all the time. So I'm a little, like, I, I think it's great, but I just, I sit here and, and I think doing as much online and making this available, but I just, not quite seeing where those three people that volunteered are finding the time to build their skill and, and transfer and utilize this skill and help their own teams. Where they, what, what times are they doing that? Sorry.
Do you wanna go first?
So, the, the people that Courtney had talked about are part of our building leadership teams that we have in each and of our buildings, and those are stipended positions.
So they are-
And they meet after school.
Okay.
But I, I also wanna say, that's a really valid concern, especially 'cause this kind of information isn't the kind of thing you wanna be doing at, at midnight. A, 'cause you shouldn't be up early. B, your room for air grows a lot, um, at that time. And so that's a pretty big concern of mine as well. But I've been working with people, a coalition of the willing, uh, so to speak, tend to be specialists who already work with data. I've been targeting people who already use it, and how can they use it a little bit more tightly? Um, people who, who give presentations on data a lot tend to have a lot of data in their hands, and they don't always know what to do. Um, people who, who give presentations on data a lot tend to have a lot of data in their hands and they don't always know what to do with it. So, I'm there to help them through it, 'cause they have to work with it anyway. So, it tends to be kind of administrators or specialists right below administrative level, people who have to do it already. 'Cause you're right, I, I was trying the other way and the people who sign up are the people who sign up for everything, 'cause they're great at what they do. They're so good and they wanna do even better, and I admire that, but I also don't to burn them out.
Right, but if you, if you're working all day and you're, you're doing special stuff after school and then you go home and you do something with your family and then, you know, you're trying to do this other stuff at, uh, between nine thirty and.
Well, they're getting a stipend, don't sign up.
Yeah, well, uh.
Right?
No, I, 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 that's, that's great, but it didn't sound like we have coverage in all the schools.
Right, so, so it is, so I have been targeting, and a lot of the people on, that are teacher leaders on the MTSS team are people who already have to work with data through, either they already have comfort with Excel, like, reading specialists who work with a lot of data as it is. How do we help them feel more comfortable in leading those conversations with the teachers that they already have? Uh, so that's kind of the avenue that, that I've been going in this year so far.
No, no, it's okay. I just, I wanna put some closure to this, that last year, Courtney's been less than two years, you're right?
It'll be two in February.
Two in February, right. So, last year was the first year that, that people were exposed to this process. So, obviously, there's a lot of challenges and bumps in the road. This year, and I know Courtney can say this, 'cause we've had these conversations, the light switches, the light bulbs are going off all over the place. People are starting to see the benefit of this process and they're having real substantive conversations about how to use that, that process that you've, you've seen tonight. Which is the reason why we wanted to do this presentation before you started seeing other data presentations this year. Because every time you see a data presentation, you can think about this one to see, this is how staff are using the data.
This would be more for Craig, I guess, but can you give us a, an example of, uh, some successes that have occurred due to the, the collection and, and, and the, uh, review of the data?
Yeah, um, so, I know the high school teams, which is the biggest team to work with and, uh, is broken down departmentally, um, had a lot of interest in figuring out, um, how to move their math and their science forward and involve, uh, groups for tier-two interventions, which they're starting to look at, and they said, "How do we know, like, how everyone did and how do we make sure we know where they are right when they come in?" So, they worked with their, uh, department PLCs on looking at, uh, mathematics strand data, uh, which is exactly the right level, I, I, I worked with the department heads before that, to say, "How did our, um, some of our subgroups do compared to all our students in different strands and different types of questions?" And then take their scope and sequence and, and put it next to that. Uh, they didn't do well on open, this is an example, this isn't necessarily the one they came up with, but, uh, they didn't do well on open response questions, did, did we give them enough chances to look at word problems and have short responses in math? Maybe we didn't do that. Um, was it that a lot of students leave class in the middle of the day and don't go to, uh, general ed classes that are in the afternoon? Uh, can, can we schedule something for those kids who leave, uh, early because they have different, uh, different needs or different struggles? How do we help them? Um, so, I worked with each of the departments to kinda walk through what they were looking at.
So, we, we probably, the way I'm retaking it is that we're, it's still on planning stage?
No.
Or, I mean, you're using the data to decide, this is what we're gonna do, but we may not necessarily have seen that gap close between our students.
Oh, oh, like outcomes, okay.
Yeah, an outcome.
Well, an important thing that has happened since last year and is now happening this year is every school now has scheduled intervention blocks.
Yeah.
Which is huge, because now, we are using the data to inform, who are the students that need those additional interventions? So, every school now has intervention blocks.
Can, can you tell us a little bit about the intervention blocks?
So, they're, they're po- pockets of time, uh, during, during the school week in a, in a schedule. And it's usually the same time for all students by either grade level or department, depending on, on how it's structured, where teachers are, and tutors and sometimes parent educators or Title One support is providing support to students in targeted areas. So, one school may be focused for the next six to eight weeks on literacy skills. And so, their intervention blocks, say they have three thirty-minute intervention blocks, um, during the week, that it is targeted, uh, time with students, with teachers and tutors, um, on particular skills based on data that they, that they have available to them.
Right, and now the intervention block and this process of data, a lot of the times when deciding whether students are going to an intervention or not, a lot of the time is spent only here, which is really important when you're trying to decide whether a student should get extra support or not. But whether, what was missing was the overview. If seventeen of your kids need extra support, 'cause you're, you're looking one-to-one-to-one, which is a natural inclination of an educator, which is a good inclination, you're also missing out those seventeen students. If, if you look at the overall, you see seventeen out of my twenty-three. In my intervention block, I don't have to send each of those seventeen to an individual activity. How do I work with my reading specialist, how do I work with my Title One coordinator to maybe make groups, um, of mixed abilities? And how do we find an intervention that works for everybody and kind of use that, that way to better service at a tier-one level before you start, uh, sending students out of the classroom for extra support?
The, just, to Gary to follow up on your question, I have received reports and they're, they're isolated and, and very limited data sa- uh, sampling, but of positive reports from parents who have identified kind of counting of certain things that have helped, uh, behaviors or, or lesson planning and so forth, that have, uh, 'cause we had a presentation on data last year a few months ago and I've had some conversations with people just, you know, kind of organically in, in the community and, and the students, um, about their experience in the district. And, and so I have received some positive feedback about experiences individually with teachers. Obviously, I can't describe where, when, how, but, um, these were specific instances, all of them, where, uh, teachers had counted things that had helped the student improve and the parents noticed and appreciated the, kind of, the, the quantitative as well as the qualitative approach to, um, helping their students. So, you know, at, at least in those isolated incidents, it's been very helpful.
So, the intervention blocks would be, let's say, in an elementary school, you know, grade three might have it, might be focused, does, does everybody in that school focus on that one, um, data point, uh, information on, that they receive on?
It really is at the, the level, it's at the building level, they're determining what they're gonna focus on and it is for a six to eight week span.
And then, so there's, there's, you said there's three blocks during the course of a week?
No, no, I, I use it as an example, every school is different depending on what they had available to them. For example, at the high school, we have the office hour, which is from seven-thirty to eight on Tuesdays, and they have the flex block, which is on Thursdays.
So, how would it look in an elementary school or middle school? It doesn't have that time.
It's different by school, right?
Yeah, it's, it's all building-specific.
Yeah, I know, so, I'm keep, I'm looking for an example of.
Okay, I, I thought he just gave one earlier, on literacy.
I'm looking, I'm looking, how would it work in, in a, you know, it's Tuesday, we have an intervention block, how does that work? What type of support and how does it, how is it, um, you know, spread out throughout the building?
So, it's usually done by grade level, so say, say, grade five at the elementary would have, say, Tuesday at one-thirty. They would have thirty-minute block where they are focused, there are, there, there's gonna be certain adults that are gonna be assigned to that block, teacher, classroom teacher is one of them, um, and they're going to be focused on a particular skill or set of skills that say, focus on literacy. So, the data is going to inform them what they're gonna focus on, and they're gonna stay focused for six to eight weeks on that particular set of skills.
And it's all students, or is it?
In that grade level.
Okay.
Okay, now, there'll be some students that won't need the intervention, they may need some additional challenges, so they'll be extending their learning, uh, in that block. But really, that's all planned at the building level with the building principal and, uh, that grade level team.
But each class, each grade level is receiving some of this?
Yes, that's scheduled in all, in all the schools, we have intervention blocks.
It varies from, obviously, if you don't have enough support staff to do it all at the same time, it's.
No, we, there's no way we could do a whole school at the same, same time at the elementary.
Borowski.
Thank you, um, thank you for the great presentation. In the example that you just gave, Dr. Doherty, with the literacy, is there a mechanism in place for, okay, we're gonna, this is the, the thing we're gonna work on for six to eight weeks, we've seen data that indicates this needs some additional work, is there a mechanism in place for identifying, like, I'm thinking of post and, and a pre and post-assessment? Um, so you mentioned, like, you might design a quiz to get at, was it, um, a particular issue in math? Is there a post-assessment, so the teachers can say, "Boy, that intervention really did improve this," or, um, or not?
Yes, the answer is yes.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
That's why it's done for a six to eight week span.
I imagine that's really good, you know, I imagine that actually is gonna build more momentum around this, is when people see it working, right? That, then you get much more buy-ins, that's great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thanks.
We, uh, special education.
All right, so I think you all have, um, the attached memo and I think this was a great framework as to what I was really hoping, that as we start to look at the areas in special education, we're looking at it from a, a similar framework, um, with different groups of people. So, what I have done in the memo is really outline some of the steps we've already taken around reading and supporting the bridge program in the district during my tenure, because that's really all I can speak to, so during fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, and sixteen, seventeen, I will note that there was one error, um, on, let's see, oh, maybe it was corrected. Okay, looks like it's also, yeah. Okay, so that looks fine, I think it's actually, um, on the bottom of the second page where it says, summer, it should be summer two thousand seventeen professional development, not summer two thousand eighteen, that was the one error. Um, so, really, the question that had come up was what are we doing in response to the OCR concerns that were raised? Um, and so, when I looked at the information and the information that was shared with us through parents, it's really taking a look at the structures we already have and using those structures with, you know, our MTSS framework, our focus on data as Courtney just presented on, systems and practices. And how do we use our existing systems, the existing system of our CPAC, the existing system of our PLC structures, to gather feedback from everyone who is a stakeholder in this? It's, it is our families and our parents who are an important piece, our student outcome data, how are our students doing and what's that data showing us? And also hearing from our teachers who work day in and day out, as Courtney mentioned, that, that teacher piece, that teacher feedback and the work that they are doing. And so, what I've outlined here is a really sense of a timeline of the work that we'll be doing. And actually, starting tomorrow, I am having a coffee and conversation at the Parker School for the Parents in the Bridge Program. And, uh, Mr. Martin and I will be looking at offering some different opportunities for parents to come in and speak and share concerns, so we can gather some data from parents, um, anecdotally from that information, um, and offering some other listening sessions. Um, the CPAC also recommended doing a survey for parents, um, in relation to the bridge program. The target areas are the students and the families in the bridge program and, um, students who are receiving specialized reading instruction across the district. So, a survey, um, uh, came up, a survey for special education teachers to gather some information from them. As I mentioned, some meetings with our special ed teachers, both, um, those that work in the bridge program and our elementary learning center, um, PLCs, to hear their feedback, look at student data. Um, I've reached out to Tufts University, um, we've kind of been emailing and playing phone tag. They have the capacity to do a program evaluation, so I'm hopeful that that's gonna be a great opportunity to work with Tufts as someone outside of the school system to come in and really look at our bridge program as well as the way that we're providing. Again, I, I wanna make sure the focus for people understanding is that it's really the specialized reading. Um, it's not the reading that we provide in the general ed setting, but more of those that we provide under the IEP. Um, and then to gather all that, that's all data, as we just talked about, you know, whether that's through surveys or interviews or conversations. And bringing that data to, back to the CPAC and going through a process as Courtney described, I'd like to have a facilitator work, um, with us, with the parents and potentially with our teacher group, um, to really go through looking at the data and what is it showing us, using protocols, so we can have really good conversation about all these data points, um, versus that, at that point, and then having some recommendations come out of that. And then with our goal, that our final report out would be in April. Um, I know, you know, we're gonna have to make some decisions from a budgetary perspective earlier on and we'll have to walk through that as we, we walk through the budget. But I don't think that it's realistic to crunch that, to say that by,
Right.
you know, December, we're gonna know exactly where we need to go, because as you look at the list of things above, my hope is that as we go through this process, we're gonna find that the roots have taken hold with a lot of the work that was done during fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen, sixteen, and hopefully, we are going to see, um, that as we go through this process, um, our students are making it, that's my hope. Uh, it may not be, but that's my hope, is that because the concerns that came up were from fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen, sixteen, um, that we will see some other, you know, progress happening from that perspective. So, that's what I'm proposing in terms of a timeline, and I wanted to make sure that through this process, we hear from all stakeholders. I know our parents are an important piece of that, but so are our teachers in this process. Um, so I wanted to ensure that we were, um, including those two pieces.
Yes.
So, um, that bullet there about any initial recommendations of the FY nineteen budget, that's really sort of what you just spoke to,
Yes.
is like, that's the timeline that we need to have something, but you really won't be done
Right.
with the process, because you're really still working through the process with all the key stakeholders.
Right.
And then, um, so that January to March timeframe, be to put together that data, really continue to work with, um, a- all of the parents who, who want to be involved in the process really at that point. You're not, um, sort of limiting that at that, that stage, so.
No.
So, I mean, the CPAC is our Special Education Parent Advisory Council, that is the group that, um, you know, we rely on to work with you
Mm-hmm.
and provide, um, be, be engaged in that process really, so I don't know, are the new, you have new two new co-chairs we have.
We have three new co-chairs.
Three new co-chairs.
Yeah.
Um, so, I think it's really important that those new people really reach out, um, to some of the parents. I know we've received, you know, a variety of emails and some people feel like the CPAC doesn't have the reach to, to do this, but I think the CPAC is designed to do this by statute, by the state.
Mm-hmm.
We read what they're, how about, um, you know, and I think as much as we might have a, um, s- a school committee member who's a liaison, they're just really there to listen and, and sort of report back to us, but the key is for this work to get done and then, you know, for them to report to us and in their sort of annual, that's the guideline from the state is an annual, um, readout to the committee. So, um, I guess, how would it be, how are, like, how are people knowing about the coffee and conversation, the office hours?
So, the one we're having at Parker, the team chair coordinated and she reached out to all the families, um, at Parker who are in the bridge program and notified them via email of it happening.
Oh, so, so can we, we, are we sort of directly accessing families who are in the bridge program and/or specialized reading services?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So, like, per, not just the, here's the blog.
No, we can really, we can really target those families, and so what's really nice about that is when you work through, again, when you start to look at what our systems are, when I work through, for instance, the team chair at the building level, they know and can gather that information a lot quicker than I can at the district level, so, the list of their parents and, and for Allison Wright to do that communication to the parents was really quick. You know, we've heard back from some of the families, um, the principal will be there and.
So, the, uh, some of the parents from the bridge program were here at our last meeting and wanted us to set up a task force. I think that would be, uh, best if they just participated in the CPAC process
Correct.
as opposed to having a separate, that's kind of duplicating.
Correct.
I think that would be best if they just participated in the CPAC process as opposed to having a separate, that's kind of duplicating.
Yep, and they can come, you know, we're happy to schedule individual meetings.
So they're aware of that and can, that's a place where they can have a voice in that process.
Right, I guess we, we just need to make sure some of those people, I don't know if they, they can watch this, they can listen to this, they could be here. Or if they are parents of students currently in those programs and receiving those services, they will, will have already sort of received a personal contact.
And we, I did share this with the CPAC board, the memo specifically to them prior to this meeting. Cause some of them hadn't reviewed it in the packet, so I gave them all copies ahead of that. So I'll be thinking about and report out to you in terms of what communication we're gonna do to all of those families to let them know.
Yes. I just had a question, just estimates, the number of students in the bridge program, ballpark?
I would say max we have is probably twenty-five.
Twenty-five students, I was gonna say thirty.
Twenty-five to thirty.
That's throughout the district.
From elementary up to high school.
And, and, and out of four hundred some on IEPs?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred some, okay, so, so it's a small number. So one thing you said here in the twenty seventeen, eighteen, you said you're ensuring not only compliance, but also working toward improved student outcomes. Who's reading the twenty-five IEPs to make sure that we're following them?
The team chairs are who are administrating to review all those, and principals.
Have, have we included, I would feel good if I saw that as a bullet point here that, that we're gonna include in some evaluative manner of, of the right person. That people will be accountable for reading the IEPs for each student in the program and following them. And, and that goes not just for the bridge program, but, I mean, I know eight hundred is, is a lot of students, but it's, that's eighteen percent, fifteen roughly. Fifteen, eighteen percent, it's in line with our state average.
That we have to.
That is our process, yeah, that is our process for.
But gonna make, making sure that, that that is, is front and center. And this is good that we have these, you know, opportunities to gather inputs from stakeholders and parents and, but wanna make sure we read the IEPs. Can I ask a second?
Sure.
There's mention of dyslexia, the students with dyslexia, there's a few things here, that's specifically called out on the last page of the memo. Joining an association, and then you have teachers that had apparently one day training recently, and then five teachers having a training available to them. And then some grant-based opportunities for additional resources. Have we requested or, or kind of set a goal to obtain feedback on these opportunities from parents? And I think the CPAC process is a good one. Since you mentioned that community, and that is a community that, that we heard public comment about. Parents affected by, with, with students having dyslexia. I'd really be interested in receiving specific feedback on what they view as the options and the resources that they think would be most effective for the CPAC to evaluate, for the district to evaluate. And making sure that we're getting that perspective included and that, that we're kind of, I don't know if waiting is the right term. But, you know, that the parents who self-educate on, on matters most affecting their kids, that we wanna make sure that we elicit those perspectives from our community. For, for all student needs, not just dyslexia, but, all right, so if there's some way to make sure, hey, we're gonna have a public comment process. But we're gonna ensure that for the sub-populations of our students who have these dyslexias, one example, but I'm sure there are other diagnosed types of, of student need in special ed. That we get a certain representative number of parental input comments, whatever, and we really set that as a goal in the survey process, right? That we get a sampling that's hopefully as representative as possible with the people most closely affected and knowledgeable in our community to help us learn as a district how best to serve their students.
So you're looking for us to sort of set a goal about how many families we'd hope to hear from?
So, you know, it's something with just making sure that, that when it comes to the steps that, you know, you listed here for dyslexia is, you know, what do, what do parents' children think that will provide for their kids? Are there other steps that they would advocate for their kids and like to hear? And they wanna know that they're heard and represented in this process. I just wanna give them every assurance that we're not gonna close the gates of a survey before we hear, you know, a, a representative number of perspectives from each of the different types of student, student needs.
Well, I'm, I'm just focusing this year really on the bridge program and the specialized reading.
And that's a good start.
I think that really is where we.
Which is the dyslexia program, correct?
It's our students with language-based learning disabilities.
Right, it's the bridge program.
Program as others.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that you got that.
I got that, no, I, I get that, right, but I, but I get that, but I wanna kind of set the, you know, we look at, we have a process here that goes beyond this, this school year, right? Going down to the bottom of the page, and that's what I'm saying, like, as we move through that process of gathering survey data and so forth, that we have a, a strong start with students affected by the bridge program, but that we're doing that across all of our special ed in a systematic way. I know we can't do everything at once, but we wanna make sure that we hear the perspectives from parents who have educated themselves. And I think have a lot to, that, that we can hear and should hear and consider in evaluating how, how to use the resources within our district. So parents may say like, oh, that doesn't work, or I like this, people have different opinions, but people also have experiences that I think we need to listen to.
Jean?
Thank you for the memo and the thoughtfulness, and I appreciate the discussion that we're having. This gets at one subpopulation where quickly there's some concern, so that's good. Mr. Boggan just talked about sort of the other issue, which is IEP compliance, which is a huge concern. So that's the second thing that we've sort of chatted about. The third thing that we discussed with the OCR was classroom space and adequacy. And particularly, when, one parent asked a question about coolage in particular and the room divider. So I'm just wondering what work you've been doing or are doing to ensure that all classroom spaces are in compliance.
So two weeks ago, we reviewed the OCR complaint in the resolution agreement with all of our principals, assistant principals, and with our legal counsel present. So we had the opportunity to review the intricacies of the findings with all of our principals. Since that time, we've had lots of discussions with principals about that. The concern was about coolage, and I did meet with the principal and we looked at the spaces. So they have some spaces that are divided within accordion wall. The difference between those programs and those spaces and the bridge program is that it is a middle school. So there may be two small group instructional classes happening, one on either side of the divider. When the bell rings, they all leave and go somewhere else. Those students are not in that classroom all day. The only concern we had was during the lunch blocks at the middle school. And I, I looked through my former middle school principals, there are times when classes overlap. Right now, we have found that one day, one period, there is a scenario where one class leaves before the other class because of just the lunch schedule. So we're working on that. The concern is to move the class for one period, one day in the cycle might be disruptive for those students. So we need to kind of explore that more. I also wanna have a caveat that we do have shared spaces. I don't want there to be an understanding by the board, you know, or the community that we don't have shared spaces. We do have shared spaces. The scenario at Joshua Eaton was a very unique set of circumstances. And so the CPAC brought that up as concerns when our last meeting on the fourth, there were concerns brought up. And so we've talked about those pieces, I've brought any concerns that are coming up back to the buildings. But, you know, we have shared spaces because each learning center teacher does not have their own classroom space. So we just need to be mindful of that. So coolage is where we were most concerned. The principal has done the work in looking at that, and her and I are gonna go back through to see if there are any other viable options. Whether that is to move that class for every period, every day, you know, every day in the cycle, that period to a different location would be, you know, we can see if that's an option or they have the space to do that.
So was the criticism in the OCR complaint, an accordion wall or a divider?
It was, it was not, it was not an accordion wall, it was some like whiteboard sort of.
Yeah, so it's different.
Yeah, the accordion wall covers the entire world, it's not, it's not like a chalk just.
One other, I'm sorry. One other question. On the landmark outreach and then opportunity for, what's, what does that mean by ending grant funding? What if we don't get the grant?
Then I won't have the opportunity to fund that.
So we're not doing it until we know whether we have.
The grant funding is the, we, we get certain professional development.
No, I know what it is, I'm just, I didn't know whether we were paying for it with the, but we're waiting to see what.
The grant hasn't come out yet, we, we will, we most likely receive grant funding, we just don't know how much right now. The grant process has been very slow this year at the federal and state level.
Is that, can I just follow, is that the same for the district-wide data teams? So all three of those bullets there are, so in order to, in order to get the, do the work that you really wanna do, we just renovated, we need that grant funding. And then the, this other, which is professional development for teachers. I guess I just had, can I just, so the, the problem, the issue at Coolidge where there is some situation that you would like to improve is it's one day, one period.
Yes.
One day in the seven day, is it seven or six?
It's at lunch, it's six day, six day cycle. It's lunch, one day, when kids are coming in, at the same time class is going on. So you've got a sixth grade group coming in when there's a seventh grade class happening.
Oh, it's cause it's already in process, the bells are not the same, right?
Correct.
I get it, I get it.
It's lunch, so that's the one thing we're looking at right now.
They actually don't have bells at Coolidge.
They don't have bells, they just have clocks.
Just back to, I don't know, John or Carolyn, back to the grant funding. And I, I didn't see anything else in here that was pending. I guess my feeling is if, if we don't, can you report back? And, cause it seems to me that regardless of grant, I still wanna see that done.
Yeah, we're, we're assuming we're gonna get the grant funding. We just have not heard a lot from the federal government and the state government.
One caveat with the grants is you can't charge anything until it's actually been approved. So if we incurred the expense now and the grant was approved later, you can't.
I don't wanna see it go by, go, go by the wayside because either we, the grant was late or we didn't get the grant. Cause it seems to me it's something we should be doing.
Yeah, that's definitely been the challenge we're having, you know, as we go through this, is that we did choose to take all the professional development funding out of special education for this budget cycle. And so any opportunities that I have are having to wait until we receive grant funding, which has limited my ability to even kind of negotiate with some of our, you know, vendors or PD providers. Because we don't have, we don't know the dollar amount, and I don't know when it's gonna, like, what's the start date is. So I don't wanna set dates, if that makes sense.
I, I think you just answered my question, and I think the answer is you don't know. But do you have any sense of timeframe of when we're gonna hear about these grants?
The one that's my professional development, I have seen nothing.
We've started to reach out to them as well, there's a couple of grants that we historically have received that we're still waiting for the window to open up for the applications.
So I wanna reassure the committee that if we, if we're, we feel we're in a situation where grant funding is not gonna be available, we will come back to you and we will say we will be doing this.
Yeah, thank you.
I wasn't that direct, but that's what I.
If we have to ask for additional funds, then we're gonna have to ask for additional funds.
I, well.
So Carolyn, anything else on the memo? Broader point, but it's best if, cause it's not directly with the memo. Just thank you for this, this is very detailed, it's a, it's a good kind of game plan for going to the future. And I think we can talk more about, be interested in hearing a presentation on what you learned from, from these. And also the dates that we identified in the OCR complaint, and we'll, we'll keep the compliance with the IEPs. There, there's a piece of this that just for last week, from last week's discussion that we didn't talk about. I feel like we had a, a good robust discussion about next steps and what I would call kind of reactive leadership. And I say we as a committee here, broader than just, you know, this was a very good summary last week, good presentation and a good memo here. This is stepping back from that to say just two things that to me need, need to be said about proactive leadership for us as a, as a committee, myself included, all of us. Just thinking about, you know, our role and, and, and the superintendent's role together in leading the district. And making sure that, you know, as a committee, we're setting the right goals, asking the right questions, providing the right criteria for the district. And there's an evaluation process that the public has of us when, when we're on the ballot, and then we by law have of, of the superintendent. And part of that performance is, is proactive and looking forward. And we, we make some really difficult decisions as a committee about budget and about balancing many good options. And I just wanna say, and I felt strongly last week, but it wasn't the right time to say it, we're focused on the future about, it, it's important that, you know, we hold ourselves accountable and, and that we play that, that role of, of helping bring our separate perspectives to the superintendent in, in the context of setting the right goals and priorities. That following the law is, is proactively in the future is, is not an option in district to district. And that these are, you know, very serious findings by this, this OCR Office of Civil Rights with, involving two students over two years. So just for the future, it's just a charge to myself and others, as we go about our roles in setting policy, setting budgets, guiding the superintendent with clear goals and asking questions of all the speakers, that we continue to keep in mind that we're not just fighting the war of the past, not just addressing this issue, looking backwards, which we need to do. But we need to simultaneously look forward and say, where, where are, are the risks of these types of, of events happening in the future? And how do we do everything we can to prevent them, right? So it's, I just wanna cast that broader net, we'll, we'll have more conversations in the future. I didn't think we had much of a chance last week to talk about proactive leadership. I mean, I'll give a separate example of the superintendent on this in the, in the comments that I'll highlight from, you know, on, on separate issue. But in an example of proactive leadership, I think the superintendent's comments on, from writing of racism and diversity in today's packet are an excellent example of proactive leadership and going after an issue proactively, making sure that we not only address the issues in the past, but think about the future. And I just wanna take on the same commitment for us as a committee in working with the superintendent. Cause we don't just wanna address the two OCR complaints that we've addressed, we wanna prevent these types of things from happening in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I appreciate that, and I think that, you know, from one perspective, I think Dr. Darty and his leadership team have been proactive and have always done their best to be proactive. And I feel like for as many years as I've served on this board, there's been too many years when it's just been a struggle in terms of decisions that we have to make about where we're putting, you know, limited funding. I think the only time it wasn't a struggle was the like three or four years after the last override. And it was, there wasn't, you know, as much angst over trade-offs. And so, you know, we, we ultimately have that leadership responsibility. Because, you know, we're providing the guidance and the funding for this team to do what they do best. So I agree wholeheartedly that we, we need to keep doing that and finding ways to do that better for our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Yes, the budget.
Speaking of budgets.
So included in the packet is the memo that summarizes how we completed the fiscal two thousand and seventeen. And what we've done in this memo is to change the presentation a little bit to show the data and a couple of different charts that we think might help articulate where some of the final surpluses came. But we did end the year with just over four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars of surplus, which is approximately one percent of the budget. That was split amongst salary savings, so we had a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars of salary savings across all of the various schools. Within special ed, there was approximately a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And what we did want to point out as Carolyn and I go through the seventeen, eighteen, is that we did have the ability last year to prepay tuition. So that did help to offset the accommodated costs in the current year. We also received a little bit of extra funding within the circuit breaker reimbursement. And a lot of this, the timing of that is, as Carolyn mentioned, throughout the year, she was going through a lot of negotiations and discussions throughout the year. So the legal costs and the tuition and associated transportation, a lot of that was not known until really, I wanna say the last week of November. So we worked through a lot of that where we had thought a lot of the funding was going to be utilized for that. And then we were able to prepay approximately two hundred and seventy thousand dollars of tuition. That'll help offset the costs this year. We are allowed to prepay up to three months of tuition, and there is also caps on how much you can. You cannot prepay an extraordinary amount of tuition for the next year with prior year funding. So we usually. an extraordinary amount of tuition for the next year with prior year funding, so we usually look to keep it between the two seventy to three hundred thousand dollars in prepayments.
And that's gone once it's prepaid.
And once it's prepaid, so the risk, yes, thank you, that's an excellent question, so we do look long and hard at it because it is prepaid. If we encumber the funds using FY seventeen and the student comes back in district, does not go to that program, we do not get the ability to reuse that funds for something else, so very good question, so between Carolyn, as well as myself, and then we, we go through student by student and try to look at the ones where we can say, we're really certain this is where they're going to go, they're going to stay, if it's summer, we're prepaying, because it is, once you identify the student program, we, we can't reallocate it.
So we'd rather go back to free cash than to?
Yes, to risk, it would go back eventually throughout the next year, but, and we did look to keep, to the extent it was within the accommodated costs, respecting the accommodated cost part of it. Also in there, within the administration cost center, we had talked about the position that we had intentionally not filled during the year, so that salary savings went back. Within the facilities, there were two items, one, the cleaning contract, that at last November's town meeting, additional funds had been put towards that, but based upon the cleaning contract and what we had scheduled, those funds were not ultimately utilized, as well as at the end of the year as part of the collective bargaining negotiations, we had negotiated the longevity buyout. Due to the timing of when that happened, we had received funding for that in case we weren't able to fund it out of the salary savings, so, and we had said at the meeting, it's been come in June, that most likely we were not going to need it, but we didn't want to risk closing out the year and not having it since we had settled it, so those two items are part of what got turned back for facilities as well.
Thank you.
I think this is the most detailed memo we've ever gotten, so I just wanted to say thank you, it was really, really well written, very clear and easy to understand and very thorough, so I appreciated the level of detail that you provided. I, one quick question, so we turned back around one percent, my memory is, that is fairly consistent with the past, but I'm going from memory, I didn't look.
It is a little bit higher than it has been in the past.
Usually it's between point five to one percent.
Usually like two fifty.
Okay, so it's a smidge high.
Okay, and part of it was some of the items like, that we had talked about earlier in the year that were within those cost centers for that reason that we had said we're, we're going to. But thank you, we're, we're looking to make the memo more informative to people as we go, so this is the direction we're looking to head as we go through fiscal eighteen, and then work towards the nineteen budget is to, and I think Dr. Nye, this goes to some of the questions that you had asked, to really start to pinpoint where the savings are, to the extent we're utilizing them, how we're doing it, so this was the first foray into adjusting how we're presenting and disclosing the data for you.
I agree with what Jean had to say, Kriagani, I do have one question, I was reading ahead, so I missed the section on prepaying some of our special ed costs, how much did we end up?
We ended up paying, prepaid two hundred and seventy thousand, using last year's funds for the current fiscal year, which will help offset.
So that would be on top of the four hundred and fifty-one change that we?
Let, the four hundred and fifty reflects the fact that we were able to prepay.
Yeah.
We've, we've been consistently doing that for both three years now.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that that was on top of the four hundred and fifty-one.
Yes, it was, had we not done that, we would have turned that back, but historically we have, and it is within the mass general law that we can, and we do try to keep it to a set amount to do that.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of questions, this is brilliant, excellent memo, I, I agree with everyone who's spoken so far. The question I have is, for the salary savings, do, do we model a certain rate of turnover in our, our budget when we set it?
We currently do not, what we have historically done is a bottoms up budget where we look at all of the current positions that we currently have, known people, we budget their known salaries for next year based upon the assumptions that we discussed. For any open positions we have, we budget an average salary, so we look at where people have been coming in and utilize that. What then tends to happen, it's a combination of retirements, which sometimes depending on where the person is, we may not know about those retirements until the end of the year, there are also instances throughout the year where you may have an unpaid leave of absence, so somebody may, you could have an individual that may go out on paternity leave for six to eight weeks unpaid, you may have individuals who go on maternity leave who may get eight weeks paid and take four weeks unpaid, so some of that's difficult to tell the timing of it, and then the timing of when we fill positions, as Carolyn mentioned, we do have a couple of positions that are still open in the current year that we might be using a host of different things, if we use a substitute, we may have some savings, if we have to outsource it, it may be more expensive. So what we're doing this year when we're going through is we're trying to factor all of that in to try to determine, is there a way to be able to gauge it? What we also caution a little bit about, which we had happen at Coolidge last year, is we actually had an administrator that was out on an, on a paid leave of absence for a significant portion of the year, and we also had the replacement in place, so we can have instances where it works in our favor, and instances where it goes the opposite direction. So we've also been tracking this year to say, what's our hiring practice, and we've had a mix this year, we've had several where people have come in at higher salaries than the outgoing person. So we're, we're trying to look at that to say, is there a safe assumption, but what it allows us is the flexibility when we do have to outsource or we are carrying the two salaries.
Off the top, you had, do you know how many retirements we had this past year? Well, she doesn't have to do off the top of her.
So at six thirty two thousand and sixteen, so last year we had five
Five.
known retirements, and then I think we had four additional during the year, so if the individual based upon collective bargaining agreement, if they're not eligible for any of the buybacks, they don't have a notification period to let us know, so we may not find out until.
Does that help knowing that though?
It, it does, because it allows us to look at it differently, the, the problem is now is we're now reaching a point where we have less and less of those people that have been here long enough, because you, you have to have been hired before ninety-six. What's happening now is people that have been hired after ninety-six are retiring, they're telling us they're retiring, but they don't have to tell us till March, April, May.
So would it be advantageous to go back to the previous method of buyback, so that you, I think that's why they did it, that could be mistaken.
I don't know if you want to talk about collective bargaining in this.
I knew that would come up.
To the extent we do know about a retirement, then we can look at what we think has, what we might replace the person if they're, depending where they are, but again, we are starting to see a shift to that. We're not necessarily always hiring at the lower end of the skip.
It also depends on the position.
Yeah, we've had it.
You know, if there's a position where the pool is deeper, you know, it may be different than a, than one of those positions that are, that are more difficult to find.
I do, I do recall though, at one point, and John, you might too, that during one of those budget crisis years when we were looking to try to save salary for the following year, there was some sort of buyout, I don't think, I don't know what's.
It was an early retirement incentive.
Early retirement incentive.
It actually doesn't work as well anymore because of the new MTRS.
Yeah.
Well, not new, but recent, more recent changes in MTRS.
Was that contractual?
That was contractual.
Yeah, we don't want it.
Just a question on timeline, so every year we, and I guess everyone in town does this, but just, we have to make these estimates of staff turnover basically in February for.
It would actually be in December for when we're setting the budget.
So we do that in December of year one, and then that budget begins in, what, July?
For non-union, it would, for the teachers, it really begins in September.
Technically, our fiscal year doesn't start till September one, if you think about it.
And then it goes all the way through to the following summer, right, so, so we're making these, these estimates, coming in within one percent, we're doing this about eighteen, over an eighteen month window.
It's actually August thirty first.
Forty-two hundred students.
So it's the same for this as well as for special ed tuition, so we're actually not only looking to see how we are for eighteen, we're also trying to build out of district for eighteen to twenty months into the future.
So we can only, and that's where I was going actually, was the, the special ed question, so we have some funds here for special ed, about a hundred and sixty-eight, sixty-nine K, so we can only prepay three months of out of district tuition, right, so we're capped, and we, we spend what we can. Is there anything else, and, and these books close, this is FY seventeen, so these close back in July, right, these books are, June, June thirtieth, okay. July, before July first, so I guess the question is, is there anything else we could have done, there were some positions in the bridge program discussion that we talked about being grant dependent. Are, are there any opportunities in FY eighteen when we look at, and it's still early in the year, I guess comparatively, but I just see this number, and I think about grant funded positions, and I think, can we do more for special ed with these funds?
None of the funding for the bridges, positions are grant funded, those are for PD. That hundred and sixty-eight thousand, just to give you some context, that could be one out of district placement, for one year, for one student.
There's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of things that we could spend it on.
Actually, having that at the end of the year isn't bad, because we could have had a student move in, we could have an unexpected placement that could have cost us that amount very easily, so.
It, it's not a generous reserve, and it's one that in some contingencies you really may need.
Yeah, we up until the end of the month were determining whether or not we had any settlements that were going to occur in June, so it was a very, I think I probably spent ten hours a week minimum with Carolyn going through student by student, settlement by settlement, legal fees associated with it to determine where we were, and we do for some of the other areas look to say, what can we, which is how we'll be looking to report it this year, to the extent we do have some savings. How can we change that, we did, working with Mr. Martin at the end of the year, where we knew we were taking some of the per pupil in technology out of the FY eighteen budget, we were able to reallocate some of the salary savings in FY seventeen to purchase the technology to do some of the curriculum items that we were able to do in seventeen, knowing.
That we had taken it out of eighteen.
Because we were cutting it out of eighteen.
So we did, we do a lot of that analysis.
And it's hard too at the end, because it is a crunch, and we can't prepay, for instance, for professional development, so you know, if you wanted to send a teacher to training in July, well, I can't use those funds to pay for training in July, because it's happening after the fiscal year has closed. So it's really limited in what we can use any surplus funding for, which is why we really focus on the prepay. But as you know, we've talked about decisions regarding placement, and IEP meetings happen up until the last day of school, and so we have to be prepared and have the funding available, and because we can't always anticipate what will happen to an IEP team process, because that's, you know, they're individual, they're based on what's happening for that student at that time, so we really want to make sure we do have funding in that line.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's nice to prepay, be able to prepay and, and to, you know, have a num, a number at the end of the year that's true to what the budget was, but I'd much rather make a mistake and have that money go back to free cash than off somewhere where, you know, so.
And we've always been returning like about, usually it's closer to about a half a percent, and then we've had a few years where it's, you know, around a percent, and you know, we, I believe we've done that every year, I, we've never gone and asked for a reserve or any transfers, and so.
Not since accommodated.
Right, right, not since we changed that model, just to the point about, I mean, we, we had issues where we had to provide services through RISE that were not expected at the beginning of the year. Right, so we had a perfect example within this budget that when it goes the other way.
No, thank you.
Thank you. So the last item on the agenda.
Who's the calendar?
Last item on is the calendar, so we had a, or the discussion came up about the fact that Veterans Day falls on a Saturday, and you would explain to us when we talked about the calendar back in.
A year ago.
A year ago, that. What, because it was on a Saturday, that's on the, so now is, there's been some question about?
No, it, it's been discussed enough, so I, since this is a committee decision, I felt it was important that the committee review it, and, you know, after discussion with you, that's why it's on the agenda.
So I guess I'd just like to open it up, does anybody, so Dr. Darty laid out a potential plan, if we changed things where the last day of school would, would.
It would get moved to the twenty-first.
To the twenty-first.
Well, that's if all five days are used.
And, yeah, and we would then have November tenth, is it?
November tenth would be a nine.
November, Friday, November tenth as a, as a non-school day. We need to make this decision soon.
It has to be, really it has to be tonight.
So is a non-school day for, well, I'd say everyone, huh? Teachers and students.
So does anybody have any?
Where's the calendar, do we have the calendar here?
Just got instinct, like not, I'm open to any discussion, but I am concerned about communicating out to parents with three weeks' notice that they've got to find childcare.
Yeah.
This, this calendar was published a year ago, and I know, I, at least in my house, I take the school calendar and I mark up the calendar, I know, I, I am a little bit concerned about impact to families.
I think the people that.
I think one of the concerns that came up was we're one of very few districts that don't have that, so there's potentially staff members in our district who live in other communities that are going to have that question with.
Just, yeah, just so you're aware, ourselves, Newburyport, Weston, North Andover, they all have school currently on that day. There are some school districts that have professional days for teachers on that day.
I just want to add that I've done a lot of research on it, and I've actually reached out to some administrators in other districts. And I'd say the vast majority of school districts are closed on that day. I haven't, you know, it's feasible that they maybe have a professional home, I haven't heard of that, I went up ninety-three, one twenty-eight, ninety-five, and you know, I was sort of taken back by, and the reason I, I brought it up was I work, as some people know, at Salem State, I happen to teach on Wednesdays and Fridays, and I noticed that I had that off, and I'm thinking, hmm, wow, that's, I didn't, and I'm not faulting Dr. Darty on it, but I think the impression was that, you know, because it was on a Saturday, it didn't have to be celebrated on Friday. And I, I certainly understood that, and I know that is essentially a truth, and, but it's just so few that do it. And I do think, you know, it's celebration of a patriotic day that celebrates all of our service members, people that have served in the armed forces, and I can speak from my own personal, my father, my father-in-law both served, whereas Veterans Day is really celebrated for those that have died in the war, but I think it's an important day that should be observed, but I can also appreciate what Ms. Borowski said, but I, I do think that it's, it's a day that is worthy of celebrating or observing, let's say, on the day previous to our day after, on Sunday, Sunday.
Yes.
So I, I understand that it's, it's, that we need to take this day annually to observe Veterans Day, and this high school is dedicated, right, to veterans who have served and continue to serve, and there is an unbelievably beautiful memorial outside of our school, and I, I would hope that as maybe people on that Saturday will come by and have a moment of silent reflection there, would be a good spot to do it. But I really feel like with three, slightly over three weeks between now and that day, that the, and I haven't heard from, from families at, at all about really wanting.
about really wanting, we should have had that off. I think people are surprised. I think when you explain sort of this is how the state sets up the holidays and that's what we did. And we sort of, you know, maybe we could have had a richer dialogue about it last March. Have we approved the calendar?
November.
November, November.
A year ago.
You, you approved the calendar a year ago.
Right, because everybody always wants us to approve the calendars early. So I, I really think that the, the amazing task of trying to get to notification out to people and then have people, parents, change their schedules to provide childcare is one that we would end up with a pretty significant backlash. So I, I, I would hope that the community is not interpreting it as, you know, our unwillingness to acknowledge the service of, of veterans and, and current military because that's not the case. We, basically, we're following the guidelines of the state. I just feel like...
Except the state doesn't follow those guidelines. State, state employees, non-essential state employees are the day off. There's no mail, you know.
Yeah, I, I guess we, we followed what was laid out, whether the state didn't follow it.
Right, I'm just saying it may have been inaccurate to some degree.
So I, I just think it's, and I, I, obviously, it's unfortunate that it will impact some of our teachers. Potentially, those teachers though, potentially have been planning for that and, and either that's a, a personal day, I would guess, or they, they will make whatever arrangements they need to make. Where, and, and so they've been planning for that because this has been the calendar since this started school year. Whereas the four thousand two hundred children, families, I don't know how many families that is. I don't, but those families have not been planning for this. And it would be, I think, I don't want to create a hardship.
Yes.
Just something else to keep, as I'm processing this, to keep in mind is the precedent we'd be setting about revoting a calendar.
Yeah.
It's just something to be in mind. We vote the calendar every November. I would hate to see us, we just have to be really careful about establishing a precedent that if we change our minds six months later, maybe we'll vote a different calendar. That would create an uncertainty that wouldn't be good for, and staff or family or anybody.
Yes.
Veterans Day is not a floating holiday. It's a very specific day and time. And it's intentional to make that one. Say, oh, we'll do it on another day, that just isn't right.
Well, it's, it's actually, the federal government actually allows you to do it and actually does recommend it. I know what you're saying. It is, you know, it's not like Labor Day or Memorial Day. But it is in fact celebrated, it's a federal holiday. And, you know, you can choose to not observe it on the, on the tenth. But as I said, all, you know, every state university is closed that day. And the vast majority of school districts are closed. And again, I just go back to the, the fact that it's a tribute to our, those that have served in the armed forces. And I think that's a very, that's something that's, I think, very important in this day and age. We hear a lot about, you know, our, our veterans coming back from Gulf Wars. And, you know, I just think it's something, and I, I don't know if our, and I'm thinking more about the value of our, our youngsters, our students appreciating it. And the discussion that comes up, well, why do we have this day off? Well, this is a Veterans Day. Whereas I don't think it would be as significant if it's celebrated on a Saturday to them because they have Saturday off anyways. There's about a million other things going on with...
But all veterans are, do we know for a fact? I mean, probably most Veterans Day celebrations are being held on the day.
They're on, they're on Saturday.
It's Saturday.
Right, I, I wouldn't disagree with that.
Not that Friday, so.
Right, the, the guidance was that the, the holidays, when it falls on a Sunday, it's observed on a Monday. So next year, it would be, we would have the Monday holiday, even though Veterans Day is on the Sunday. But that Saturday holidays are observed on Saturday. And that was the guidance that we followed.
Yeah, well, I think the guidance wasn't as accurate as I thought, so.
I, I agree, but I really, I, I agree, obviously, with both points that Jean made, which is, I, I think that people have been planning and it's very, we'll, we'll put families in a difficult position. And I think that, you know, that I also would agree. I would be a little concerned about a precedent setting. And I do think people will have the opportunity to celebrate on Saturday. I do not know offhand what events are being planned in our community, but I'm sure the ba, our band is doing something somewhere in town on Saturday.
It's on Saturday and it starts at eleven o'clock.
And it's always very beautiful. It's always a very...
It's on the common.
So I, I know we, I think, I don't know whether we're going to take a vote, you know, make a motion to take a vote. I can make the motion if we want to make the motion and then...
Yeah, it's been a really good discussion, there's a lot of viewpoints here. For me, the key thing is that families need to rely on that calendar. So for me, it's, it's stare decisis that the school committee votes once a year on a calendar. This, these are excellent considerations. It's, it's an important holiday. It's important to recognize all those who serve in our community. And it's something that should be part of next year's discussion, in my view, at this point. I'm open to other, anything else anyone else wants to say. But at this point, for me, it's about allowing families to rely and set their schedules by that calendar and not having to set a precedent of, well, did the school committee vote to change that or not? Or having to, families should just, you put it on the cal, on your refrigerator, that is this ready school calendar and people can rely on that. To me, that's, that's key.
And the other point, I just, final point, is the schools do recognize Veterans Day. I know that Joshua Eaton has their present ceremony every year.
There's several schools in the district that have Veterans Day ceremonies.
I can make a motion and then if we can still have discussion. So move to change November tenth to a holiday in observance of Veterans Day and move the last day of school from June twentieth, twenty-seventeen to June twenty-first. I mean, June twentieth, twenty-eighteen to June twenty-first, twenty-eighteen, if all five snow days are used. The second.
Your second.
Yeah, the second.
Any further discussion?
Taking a vote?
Yeah.
Vote in favor?
All those in fa, in favor? 反对呢? opposed?
Okay, I, I think it was made clear that we all were unanimous in our support of veterans.
Yes.
Yep. See how it's received.
Well, I do, I do hope that people participate.
Yeah, we already had the discussion.
All right, is that it?
That's it.
Motion to adjourn then? Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Thanks.